Madam Mayor, it's 6 o'clock.
Okay. If everyone would please find their seats. Fellow commissioners.
Hello.
Fellows. Okay, we're live, folks. We are live. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Tuesday, January 21st. Regular City Commission meeting to order and ask that the court to call the roll, please.
Mayor Pam Triolo.
Vice Mayor Andy A. Marosa.
Here.
Commissioner Scott Maxwell. Commissioner Omari Hardy is absent for the roll. Commissioner Herman Robinson.
Here.
Thank you.
If everyone would please rise for the invitation offered by Commissioner Robinson.
Today, may we be open to others' ideas and beliefs, respectful of our differences, not threatened by them. May we grow in understanding of our own motives, knowing that people often act out of their own fears. May we be a force for replacing fear with insight, helping us all to be patient and kind as we talk. Strength, real strength, can always find compromise. Working together, may we find a common ground, enable us to move forward with a shared purpose. May we see what is truly important and unites us, focusing on that to banish roadblocks of ego and fear today. May we be open to others' ideas and beliefs. Amen.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there were two proclamations that we added when we found out about the retirements of Scott Sanders and Henry Reine. And there was a second addition that was put on this morning, and it has now been taken off, and the city attorney will go over it with you if you have any questions about it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, then, we're going to move right on. Well, first, we need to entertain motion to accept the agenda as amended. Second, all those in favor say so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our presentations. First up, an update by the library board. I believe Mary Lindsay is here.
Oh, hi, Mary.
Hey, Mary.
Hi, everybody. Mary Lindsay, 327 Columbia Drive in beautiful College Park. We have to have a little playing rough in here, just so Mary knows how to do this. Oh, Mary knows how to do this. Okay.
Wow.
All right, I sure hope that everybody in this room has one of these yellow cards in your wallet in someplace where it's always convenient and where you can get to it, because really, you should have access to Lake Worth's most treasured institution, and that, of course, is the Lake Worth Library. Since 1940, that's almost 80 years ago, sort of, Lake Worth has had this incredible place because of the residents of Lake Worth. In 1939, 81 years ago, the U.S. Congress allocated $60,000 to pay for the Major General William Jenkinworth Memorial Library to be built within the city of Lake Worth. $60,000. Congress said yes, it was all ready to go. JFK, believe it or not, vetoed it. Yeah, oh, that's right, yeah, FDR, not JFK, he wasn't around then.
He was working on it.
Lot of initials, though.
So, anyway, what happened is that the citizens of Lake Worth said, no, we are going to have a library, we are going to have this building. Not one penny of tax dollars went into building that library or even buying that land. So, the Lake Worth Library belongs to the citizens of Lake Worth in a deeply, deeply personal way, and I personally think that's why it is so treasured and revered by the citizens of Lake Worth. Here it is being built. 1946 months later, January, or June, June, is that June or January? Can't say.
January 41.
January. Yeah, look at that, 1941, today's date. There it is, practically finished. Beautiful. And here it is today. Has a new and different look, and to go with that new and different look, there are some new and different hours of operation, days and hours of operations. All kinds of new things are happening at our library, which is, as a member of the Library Advisory Board, this is how we make the best lemonade in the South from the lemons that sometimes a restricted budget can lay on a treasured institution like our library. And so we did. The new hours of operation are, of course, from 12 noon until 6:00 p.m., but that's just when the building is open. From 10 to 12 every day, the new Lake Worth Library is out in the community, offering services off-site, reaching as many people in the community as possible. There will be a considerable facelift, new paint job done on the inside. The whole area is going to be reorganized and moved around. The children's area, which is being moved up front and just to the south side, in the big rooms in the front, is going to be just spectacular, but it's also how it was originally laid out. So, we're real excited about that with the new children's room. The artwork, of course, has all been taken down so that it can be painted, and it is not just going back up willy-nilly anywhere. The art will be curated, and a very special collection will go back up on the walls of the library because we have such a treasure trove right across the street in our Lake Worth Museum. And one of the things that's not exactly new, but it's certainly new since the library board reported to the commission some time ago, is our Spanish Family Resource Center at the library. We have a whole collection of books in Spanish for the entire family, all in one beautiful area that's now been moved front and center and much more accessible. From a working point of view, the collection at the library is going to be carefully culled. We don't need so many reference books anymore in paper. What we need are more books like people want to read. And the way to do that and keep it current is through lease collections, which is how we will be moving forward. It just makes so much more sense. You think this is like the only slide I've got? That's just not true. It's just everything that was with the new library. Nothing happens, nothing good happens in neighborhoods, in the city, or anywhere in the world without partnerships and collaboration, and that is also true at the Lake Worth Library. These organizations that you see here are just some of the few, but these are the major contributors to all of the programs and efforts at the library and the programs that we take out in the community. If you've had a chance to look at the little green paper that I gave all of y'all, you're going to see some pretty incredible numbers on there. Numbers like 4,500 visitors to our library every month. We're not guessing. Also new, and through the Friends of the Lake Worth Library, following the suggestions of the library board, we don't have a people counter, so we have some real numbers. We know when the people are coming, how many, and we know what times a day. We know that they are checking out 2,200 items a month. 1,600, 1,600 computer hours, computer sessions at the library every month. 10,000, almost 10,000 attendees at more than 200 in-house and off-site programs that the library offers. 800 children each month at Storytime. That's pretty impressive, don't you think? That's a big wow. This is one of the brand-new, this slide right here, this is about our Peter in the Wolf Read-Along Musical Concert that we just held in January 5th. What this is, is there is the Lakeside Players Chamber Ensemble playing the music. Our own Joe Ansel, Cindy's husband, was the narrator for Peter in the Wolf. We had 50 chairs set up in the library, and we got 75 people. We were packed. We were absolutely packed. Families came with children, and this, this is one of the new and exciting ways we want to use the library building itself as a venue for performances that reach out to the community. The next one is going to be, here's some more of the people that were there, and you can see it, I mean, kids, whole families, babies, it just worked out so well. The next performance is going to be, and that's on your, it's in there, what was it, March 29th? March 29th is going to be the Mother Goose Suite by Ravel. So, we're really, really looking forward to that. We did, we think accountability is important, and numbers tell us what we need to know about programs. So, we did some surveys at this event, and we had an incredible response rate, so we feel like the numbers are pretty accurate. 33% of the people who came to the library had never been to the library before. 33% are different, some of them were different people, of the respondents had never been to a live musical concert before. Wow. So, that tells us that we can offer a very relevant, important service that enhances the cultural experience in Lake Worth. Biblioteque is our library's signature annual event, and what's happening next month is this is our fourth annual Biblioteque, where Lake Worth celebrates the intersection of art and literacy. What is so special about what we do is that we are very specific in that the artists that we feature are all artists who specialize in illustration for children's books. Look at this man's work. I mean, it's for everybody, it has universal appeal, and yet, he still takes the time and puts his energy and focus into artwork to specifically relate to children. During the week before the big festival on Saturday, he will be visiting all of our elementary schools, our middle school, and our high school to talk to the art classes, to talk to the children, to encourage them to give voice to their vision. We're real excited. And National Library Week, this year, April 19th to 25th, this is when we want to have it, the special grand reopening of the Lake Worth Library. We are already way ahead of schedule when it comes to what we want to do to revamp the library, so we'll definitely be ready by then. One of the important things we want to repeat is the Literary Walk, the Walk for Literacy, where we have the kids from the elementary schools come together and just, that's what's so great about Lake Worth, is that this is right in the middle of downtown, and our kids from North Grade, South Grade, and Sacred Heart can all walk to the library, and they do, all the time.
Thank you very much.
You set the place on fire, Mary.
It's my job. Continue, please.
Thank you very much. Okay. Kids in the Park, this is a program that's put together by REC2Go, by our REC department. Wherever there are events in the city of Lake Worth, through the neighborhoods or through the city events themselves, the library is always there. We've got tables set up with activities with Cindy and Ms. Kay, and Little Free Libraries is always there, and this is, there is a triumvirate right here in Lake Worth. The organizations, the Little Free Libraries, the Friends of the Lake Worth Library, 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and the Children's Library of the City of Lake Worth all work together. So, we're there. This is the Create Lab. This is brand-new at the library, just to the last year, and you'll see some of the staffs in the notes I gave you. This is only for children at the library, so it's safe, it is absolutely up-to-date. Healthier Lake Worth, Healthier Lake Worth, yes. Gave us a huge grant, we got a REAP grant early on before we couldn't get them anymore. You can read all about it in the papers, Books &amp; Bubbles, is a new program between the library and the Little Free Libraries. This is where we take books into the laundromats. We get them where they are. I didn't mean to put this slide in. This sort of snuck in there, but we're going to work around it because those trophies, while they celebrate the fact that the library with the Little Free Libraries won trophies in two of the Christmas parades, yay. These are the real trophies. These are our real blue ribbons. These are the winners. These are the kids from our Storytime groups. Look at these doll babies. This guy's.
Timing is everything.
Making ladybugs. The Storytimes, what we're doing is we're building confidence in these little ones, encouraging them to be curious about the world around them and to experience and expand that curiosity through reading, through music, through activities, through getting together. They sing, they dance, they march, they do little activities like that, they build the crafts, and they are all rewarded at the end of it with their picture taken by Ms. Kay and a sticker from Ms. Cindy and a little something to take home. You'll notice in these pictures, there's mommies and babies, children with their daddies, grandchildren, and grandparents there that bring them for this. It's just, you really want to have yourself a wonderful day, follow this lady around, Ms. Cindy, the librarian, anywhere in Lake Worth. The children just adore her. How cute can they be? This is just, this is just so important, and it's so special, because if we can get them loving books, loving each other, loving just, at this age, we got them forever. There is just no end of this. Well, I mean, there's just been like thousands of kids in the last year. Come on, come on, come on, we're getting there. Oh. Oh, you just want to die. These are the kids, what we're trying to do is raise a new generation of readers in Lake Worth. Readers make future leaders. We're turning these kids into superstars, and we encourage all of our little boys to do what Batman and Robin and Superman do. They read, and we want all of our little girls to be like Wonder Woman. Seek the truth always and read. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Okay. Moving on, we have our, oh, we're in the presentations. Our proclamation to commemorate the retirement of Scott Sanders.
Say this and so.
Say this and so.
He's going to be a consultant.
Yeah, you want me to get Jamie and?
Jamie, yeah, come on up.
Henry, you want, same time? You want to do Henry and Scotty all at the same time?
No.
Nope? Okay.
This is a lot of warehouses, but you've earned them. Whereas, Scott Sanders started his employment as a building maintenance supervisor in the city of Lake Worth Beach on October 2nd, 1995. Worked hard for the city and is retiring January 31st, 2020. Say he doesn't so. Whereas, over the years, Scott has shown his dedication to his job here in Lake Worth Beach, doing his day-to-day assignments, as well as his work during many hurricanes, such as Andrew, Frances, Jean, Wilma, Irma, Michael. Whereas, in June of 2007, Scott and his crew worked under very difficult circumstances when, after Tropical Storm Andrea, the pier suffered extensive damage, and Benny's erosion had eaten away at the dunes and caused the bar to collapse. Scott had to work quickly to assess the situation and secure the utility supply lines of the building that had become disengaged from the entire structure, all while fighting waist-deep waves. Whereas, in November of 2008, Scott and another public works employee responded after midnight to secure a home in the city after a serious fire caused water and smoke damage. The sheets of plywood used to secure that home were brought to the scene from Scott's own home. Now, therefore, I, Pam Triolo, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize Scott Sanders for his 24 years of service and ask only that he enjoy his retirement for at least that many more years. Now, I'm going to bring up Henry. Whereas, Henry Reine, I never even knew your last name, Reine, started his employment as a painter in the city of Lake Worth Beach on January 21st, 1991. Worked hard for the city and is retiring on January 31st, 2020. Whereas, over the years, Henry has shown his dedication to his job here in Lake Worth Beach, doing his day-to-day assignments, as well as his work during many hurricanes as well. Whereas, Henry's personnel file has a few commendations for his help and cooperation over the years, but one, to me, really stood out, Henry. In 1995, apropos, the librarian wrote a memo to the building maintenance supervisor, thanking Henry and a few others for, quote, "outstanding cooperation which you and your people gave to the library during the preparations for our recent Lovers Among Covers party." It was the librarian covers, meaning books, just to make sure no one's doing the wrong Whereas, painting is one of those jobs that may look like a lot of fun when someone else is doing it, but it's not an easy job. Henry has always been a steady, dependable coworker and a friend who has always taken pride in his work and in his community. He cares, he's always ready to lend a helping hand when needed. Now, therefore, I, Pam Triolo, Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby recognize Henry Reine for his 29 years of service to the city of Lake Worth Beach.
Jamie, you have to do the votes. Don't go anywhere.
Yeah.
Get some more interest. Jamie Round, Public Service Director. I just wanted to say to Scott and Henry, you know, being the elder statesman in the department, you guys have been nothing but model employees and a fantastic example for all those who've come after you, including myself. I want to thank you for imparting all the institutional knowledge, not just to myself and Assistant Director Felipe, but all those around you. Henry, in retirement, I'm assuming now you'll be able to dust off the boxing gloves and return to your international glory, which some people might not know. And Scott, Navy man, you now get to return to the sea full-time. I want to wish you good luck on your fishing charter and everything that you guys have coming forward. You've earned it. Congratulations, gentlemen, on your retirement. I thank you, the city thanks you.
Moving on to mission liaison reports and comments. Vice Mayor, would you like to start?
Sure. MLK events were fabulous in the city of Lake Worth Beach. I wasn't able to attend the breakfast, but I understand there was over 300 people at the breakfast. Lots and lots of people turned out for the march, great speakers. I want to thank everybody that put that together, former Commissioner Aretha Lowe for all her hard work. Tomorrow, I have Palm Beach County League of Cities Board Meeting and Luncheon. Friday, I have the SOCPROM Task Force, so it's a busy week. Upcoming events, we have the Garlic Festival coming up on February 8th and 9th. Fin Fest is coming. Street Painting Festival's coming, Gay Pride's coming, so the next few months, we're going to be very busy in the city of Lake Worth Beach.
Thank you. Commissioner Robinson?
I enjoyed every minute of the three celebrations we had for MLK, the breakfast, the march, and the dinner at Sacred Heart. The retirement of two terrific employees exemplifies what Lake Worth is, and to have Mary expound on the library is a hope that all those kids are going to love the city as much as we do and come back and be the leaders of the future. The kids that turned out yesterday and at the library are our future, it really is inspirational. One thing I just want to, I came this close to hitting a bicyclist today, and it wasn't his fault, and it certainly wasn't my fault, but I have an electric car that is silent, and he was to my right and didn't look and turned just in front of me, and so I just caution both people with quieter cars and bicyclists to pay attention. That's all.
Mr. Hardy?
We broke ground, all of us, at the mid, which is between 16th and 17th Avenue North on Dixie Highway, over 200 units of housing type that we have none of right now in the city. It's our first-ever luxury apartment complex. Our other luxury multifamily properties are condos, so this will be the first rental property that's luxury in nature, and I. So this will be the first rental property that's luxury in nature, and I think that it will.
Point of order, point of order. Get that banana, hot dog.
But no, look, it's, I think it's going to be a game changer for the city. It's going to attract the demographic that we, you know, would like to have more of in the city, and I'm glad that we were able to break ground on that project. MLK Day was great. I attended the breakfast and I attended the activities in the plaza. It was fantastic. It, you know, really warms my heart to see what folks who are basically all volunteers have been able to do for their own community to celebrate what is a very important holiday. And the last thing is, last week, I attended Palm Beach County Day, which is interesting. You know, it's when all the folks from Palm Beach County go up and have their day to walk the halls of the legislature and twist arms and bend ears, you know, among folks there. And I was able to talk to the folks who were carrying our appropriation, and it was our, you know, I'm going to say our major appropriation, right? The moonshot appropriation, which is the Gulf Stream Energy Project. You know, so they learned some things, I learned some things. I think that this year is the year for it. I'm very, very hopeful that we can get the $2.5 million from the legislature that we are asking for. And that will be all for me.
Vice Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the downsides of going near the end of these talks is everybody's already covered everything.
I know.
So I want to start by, you know, wishing you all Happy New Year, I'm sure. We're in for a really good year this year. I hope that your holidays were all that you wanted them to be. I know the holidays around here sometimes not a lot go on in City Hall, but we promised to ramp it back up. There's a lot of activity. As Vice Mayor Amoroso alluded to, we are going to really have a dynamic 2020, a lot of great projects we have to work on, a lot of good decisions, big decisions we have to make on behalf of our residents and our city. And again, I can't say enough about the Martin Luther King Celebration over the weekend. Unfortunately, this is the first year that I was not able to attend breakfast due to work, new work responsibilities, but it never ceases to amaze me. 26 years Aretha Lowe and her colleagues have been putting on this event, and it seems to get a little bit better every year. Just when you think it can't be topped, it is in fact topped. And again, Mary, I know she's already left, but I don't know how she does. She's always so very bubbly and positive. She really is, and she's a great ambassador for the library and for her little library project. We just, this city is so blessed to have so many people that will engage with each other for the mutual benefit of our community, and I'm just proud to be a part of it. So that's really all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, since we, since the holidays, we've been busy at work. We haven't been here many, many times, but we've been busy. I wanted to also mention about the MLK celebration to call out not only Aretha, but also Paul Bloxen and his lovely wife Carla, who also cooks for that entire event, that free dinner that happened at Sacred Heart Church. She's always out there and all the volunteers out there serving it, and we do it every single year. They do it every single year. And also Ted Brownstein and all the other volunteers that were involved, and it was quite, quite a lovely day and a nice way to end a beautiful day, a beautiful couple of days of celebrations. So thank you all. The Mid was incredible. Those units are going to be fantastic. So nice to see that project, you know, breaking ground on North Dixie Highway, over 230 units, I believe, and very excited. We're really working with Palm Beach County School Board and other outside organizations to really put the focus in 2020 on our kids. You know, we know it's different than when I grew up, up north, where the cities were actually responsible for the schools here, having a third party having a school system that intervenes on behalf of it, not the city being involved, and that sometimes there can be two separate identities not working together. And we've been really working over the last few years to encourage our principals and our teachers and to create programs and to mostly as a city listen to what they need. And we'll be working with them. One of the projects is the community collaboration, being spearheaded by our School Board Commissioner, one of them, Erica Whitfield. And I had a chance to go to that VPK and PK community collaboration at Highland Elementary School. Very insightful, and a lot of needed resources going to be coming the way, thanks to open dialogue. And having these dialogues is really, you would think that, you know, everyone gets a chance to talk to everybody on different levels, and there are resources out there that our kids need in our community, and they're going to be getting them. So having these types of events are really important. Another big event was the Palm Tran Bus Kickoff, a big deal. That Route 62 to the beach resumes at the beach. Six stops now in the city of Lake Worth Beach. So if you'd like to avoid having to pay for that parking at the beach now, why not hop on the Palm Tran Route 62? That sounds good to me, right? The Beach Bus, that's what they're calling it, the Beach Bus. I love it too, meeting a lot of people from the Western communities that are really enjoying it and having that return to the beach. So another option for you. Also had an opportunity to attend the Color of Hope Bike Ride and Family Event. You know, it's been years since the Haitian earthquake, but they still continue to struggle, and Color of Hope has a bike ride each and every year that I've been fortunate enough to be a part of and to get involved with the kids in the community and see them out there. They bike, they used to bike from Miami, now they're biking from Delray. So I'm hoping I might be able to work my way into getting myself fit enough to do the one from Delray Beach next year. It's a little bit shorter this time around, but what a great, great day for the kids of our community. We had our census community meeting. Census, the big push is on, folks. The count's so important to our community. We're working, I'm so proud of our staff and all the volunteers that have stepped up from all different nonprofit organizations, community organizations, PBSO, everybody working together to make sure we have a proper count so that it's going to count for us and that our kids and our communities and our teachers and our citizens and our community are going to get what we need due to a proper count. So I encourage all of you to get involved and check out our website for details on that. This weekend also at, sorry, I was a little bit busy. The Deshi Winter Fest happened. You may have heard of the Pan Asian Festival that happens. A lot of people and business people in our community and the Bangladeshi community, and they have a festival in which they come out with PBSO and they talk about all different events. It was held at the American-German Club, and I was invited to attend that event. Thank you very much. Also, Mayor's Parade at South Florida Fair every year. All the mayors from all the Palm Beach County cities get it to come around, and they put us in a convertible this year from offlease.com. I got a jet. It was pretty nice. And we got to ride around in the festival, but the most important part was what happened afterwards, which was the South Florida Fair gives out scholarships to kids. And we had two students from Lake Worth High School that won scholarships from the fair this year, so I got to be there to present them with that award. So that was very, very cool. MLK coming up, open house, the TPA, which is the former MPO, and that's a lot of initials, but it's the people that plan where all the dollars for roadways get spent. I sit on that board for the city, and they're having an open house. They're finally opening an office that's completely aside from the county commission now. They have their own office, and it's going to be in downtown West Palm Beach, 301 Detouris Street. So they're going to have the ribbon cutting for that, and that will be where all my meetings are every month. We'll be at that location. And this is very important. Please tell your neighbors, tell your friends. We're having a community crime walk, and I'm going to be quarterly now having these crime walks through areas that we know we have some issues to deal with. This time, it'll be in South Palm Park, and it'll also be in Pineapple Beach, and it's the South Federal Highway area between Palm Way and then between, I can't think of the street on the, on the west side, just behind, well, Meet Me, how about that? Saturday, this Saturday, 3 o'clock at 15th Avenue South and South Federal Highway. PBSO is graciously going to be out there with us. It's a walk to show solidarity for some of the issues that we know we're facing there, but I think it's very important. I know it may seem trivial because we know that the police are on the street doing what they can to do it, but you know, we need to take back our communities, and we need to let people know and be visible in our communities that we are there. This is our home. This is our place where our children play. These are our parks where we go to, and we're not going to put up with crime in those areas. And we're going to hand out information cards to people in the area that we see and visit through there, but we want to stand up and be seen in that community to let everybody know in the community that if you're doing bad stuff, guess what? You're going to get caught. We're going to have mayor's crime walks at every district in the city. Every quarter, we're going to be doing them, and we're going to hit the hotspots by working with PBSO to make sure that we do this and we do it right and we make a point, that we're not just making a statement, that we actually make a difference. So I'd invite you all to be there this Saturday, again, 3 o'clock, 15th Avenue South and South Fed. Sorry, normally I'm the short one, but I have a lot of stuff to talk about. Here we go. Public participation of non-agended items and consent agenda items. And that would be Todd Townsend, followed by Dr. Philip Scott Rice.
Hi, Todd Townsend, 502 South J Street. Good to see everybody tonight. We've got a lot to talk about. Regarding the public-private partnership at the beach, it's a good idea to do that with the building, but not with the pool. We're going to have a company telling us when the pool's going to be private and when it's going to be public. It's not going to work. A lot of people are going to be coming in from out of state to our new hotel. They're going to want to use water. What if the pool's closed because they're having a private party? And what if there's poop in the water from one of the Miami pipes blowing up? That's one. Number two, the CRA Downtown Project is such a bad idea. They're destroying our parking lot down there, the continuity that we do have in the parking lot, and then they're going to fix that for us by building a great big skyscraper, parking garage with cameras and everything looking down into your yards. The third thing is, I really like Mr. Wadge. I think he's a great guy. I really admire his work and everything, but I think that his idea and whoever he might be working with, to build a hotel on the beach is a very bad idea. And so it's going to get called out the next couple of days. Everybody take care of your animals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Philip Scott Rice, followed by Sandra Eckberg.
I'm known for biking a lot. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, staff. My name's Philip Scott Rice. I reside at 15 South Gulfview.
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Philip Scott Rice, I go by Scott. I reside at 15 South Gulfview Road, Unit 503 here in Lake Worth Beach, which I now call home. I am deeply involved with multiple initiatives that are tasked with trying to mitigate the opioid crisis in this county. These include, but not limited to, having served on the Heroin Task Force that the Southeast Florida Behavioral Health Network sponsored. I served on the original Sober Home Task Force of Dave Aronberg, our state attorney, along with Vice Mayor Amoroso, who's still part of it, and I attend and still facilitate with that. Also involved with, deeply involved with the Palm Beach County Medical Society, which I call kind of a home, and the Palm Beach County Behavioral Health Coalition, which used to be called SAC, or the Substance Awareness Coalition. And lastly, but not least, I'm staff for the county's Opioid Response Plan Steering Committee under the directions of John Hewlic, our drugs are in the county. What I've learned from my experience, which has been extensive for over the last three to four years in this area, is that Lake Worth Beach tends to be overlooked compared to quite a few of the other municipalities and cities for resources and developing capabilities for addressing this crisis. I'm here to say that I would like to explore opportunities to promulgate solutions, leveraging my experience and background to the crisis. And this includes the social determinants of health, which we all are very aware of, which includes the homelessness, hunger, clothing. Live, learn, work, and play, you might say. These are the root causes that drive the opioid crisis. So until we also get a handle on that, and primarily a handle on that, we're still going to have the problem. And this is for substance use disorders and behavioral health disorders in general, which nowadays really the paradigm is those two belong together. They need to be treated together, and that is the going mantra and paradigm that I work under. Thank you, and I look forward to interacting more.
Very much. Sandra Eckberg.
Good evening. Mayor Triolo, Commissioner, City Manager. I'm Sandra Eckberg. I reside at 15 South Gulfview Road, Unit 603, in the Bryant Park section of Lake Worth, beautiful Lake Worth. I have a prepared statement that the Board of Directors of our condominium has put together that I'd like to read and have inserted into your minutes tonight. The Gulf Stream Condominium of Lake Worth is located along South Gulfview Road, just south of the Gulf Stream Hotel. We have three buildings with housing units and one separate building that's used for meetings. Our condominium properties were once owned by the Gulf Stream Hotel, but were converted to condominiums in 1979. At the time the Gulf Stream condominium was developed, the city violated its own laws by allowing the developer to provide only 10 parking units instead of the required 102 spaces for a 68-unit property. Because the Gulf Stream Hotel's been unoccupied for many years, condominium owners and tenants have been parking behind our building in a lot that is part of the Gulf Stream Hotel property. During festivals in Bryant Park or downtown, non-Gulf Stream residents also park in this lot. Because we were never assigned the legally needed parking places, parking has been a concern of our condominium's previous Board of Directors for several years. Although meetings with the city were set up in the past where we presented our need for assigned parking spots, the city has repeatedly failed to address what we believe are legitimate concerns. Owners of the Gulf Stream Hotel are in final negotiations for sale of the property, and we're here today to once more press our case with the city as parking is an issue the Commissioners, I know, are currently studying. As your plans are developed, we ask if you correct the city's past failure to provide the Gulf Stream condominium with the appropriate number of spaces for our residents. Such a move on the part of the current city Commissioners will prevent the need for litigation against the city.
Thank you. Are there any more public comment cards?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing there and on, first of all, in reference to that last one, I don't want to hold that just because litigation was mentioned, so I want to refer either to the City Manager or the City Attorney before we speak out.
Yes.
We don't respond.
Okay, okay. Just fill out a public, if you fill out a public comment card, and normally, once I call them, we're done with the public comment section. You have to have a blue card to fill out. I'll give you, if you'd like to come up?
Say it from right here.
No, you can't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Everything has to be recorded properly for, and you have to state your name and your address, and just make sure that that card's filled out and you can give it to me. I can make the exception.
Oh, okay. Richard De Cidoue, I reside, I'm actually her next-door neighbor at 606 Gulfview Towers. Just two suggestions along the lines of what she just said, which might be helpful, you know, to whoever's investigating it. Suggestion number one, that the row of parking spaces that face the park be opened up to allow for all-night parking. That would create, I don't know how many are along the park, but I would say at least 20, 25 additional parking spaces in the row that are, you know, of parking spaces that are facing the park. And the second suggestion is, if this whole thing goes through with the hotel, is years ago, there used to be residence-only parking signs for the row of parking spaces that face the unit of 15 South Gulfview Road. Those parking spaces were for residents only. If that could be entertained, because if that hotel business goes through, a lot of times, which I was here when it was open, a lot of times, people wouldn't want to park in the back, even if there was valet or whatever, because they could just park in the front. So they could park in our spaces, but we couldn't park in their spaces. So that would minimize the spaces that are available to our unit, including the Statler and, you know, the other unit. So the two suggestions are that residence-only parking would be for the row facing the building, and the row facing the park be opened up to allow for all-night parking, which would, you know, create additional parking spaces for everyone, both the hotel and our unit. So that's basically, those are basically my two suggestions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you would just, wouldn't mind filling that card with your name on it?
Oh.
And give it to the City Clerk when you're done.
Can I go back to my seat?
Of course you can.
I thought you wanted me to do it right here.
No, no, no. No! No, just kidding. Just kidding. Okay, thank you all very much. I appreciate that. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. All entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye. All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our public hearing. City Attorney, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance Number 2020-01 of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, repealing ordinance 2017-12, which amended Division 1 Chronic Nuisance Services of Chapter 2, Administration Article 19, Chronic Nuisance Property Code, to provide for additional violations relating to overdosing and code enforcement, posting notices, entering into agreements with property owners, and additional penalties and replacing it with a new ordinance to insert provisions unintentionally removed from ordinance 2017-12, and providing for additional nuisance activity, providing for sevability, the repeal of laws in conflict, codification, and an effective date.
This is the second reading of this, so we had the presentation before. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Harney. Do we have any public comment cards?
I actually didn't second it. Vice Mayor, per temp.
Do we have any comment cards?
No, Madam Mayor.
Seeing there are none, I'll take questions from Commissioner Robinson.
Well, I just, one of the, have interest in the nuisance Public Works Code involvement in property, taking three years to, the consequences of the dumpsters continually being trashed. And I was hoping that it would be a shorter period of time, or less, somehow to speed up the process of holding property owners responsible for their dumpster areas.
City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So I believe what Commissioner Robinson is talking about is, there's a provision in the ordinance that if there are two or more repeat violations on the property, and repeat violation is a code enforcement term that we use, where the person has violated the same code provision within a five-year period. So under this provision, if there's two or more repeat violation on a property within a three-year period of time, we can essentially bring that person forward as a, now a chronic nuisance, in addition to the code enforcement process. I think what Commissioner Robinson's concern is, there's a three-year period here. What I believe the intent of the ordinance is, we have a three-year window to look at. So if a property violates a repeat violation of the dumpster ordinance, and they repeat that in the first six months, we could bring them under this. If it's a repeat at year two and a half, the second repeat at year two and a half, we can bring them under chronic nuisance. So actually, we don't have to wait a three-year period, but it gives us a three-year window period to look at. We could bring them under this new ordinance as soon as there's the second repeat violation. But we have now a three-year to look at to make sure that that person's not a chronic repeat violator within that three-year period.
I've just witnessed in South Palm Park alone, I mean, there's complaints of people doing the same thing every weekend, you know, the same offenses.
Right. So the intent of this is, we have our code compliance process, and if they're a repeat violator, we can keep, bring them under that process. But this gives another, us another tool in our tool belt to say, oh, in addition to code enforcement, now we're going to come after you for chronic nuisances. So it's just one more way to make the property owner pay attention to their property and keep an eye on it, and make sure that these repeat violators, which become nuisances, are being addressed through various processes by the city.
How, after, other than media, how are these landowners going to be alerted to this change in policy?
Well, the way this process kicks off is, we send a letter to them and say, your property, under our ordinance, is declared a chronic nuisance. You need to now come forward with an action plan to cure that chronic nuisance. And then the process goes from there to potentially another special magistrate hearing. But the goal of this is to really get them to pay attention and come into voluntary compliance.
But they, well, they will have three years to correct that.
No, 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 no. We have three years to watch them, to make sure they don't engage in a second repeat violation. We can bring them forward on the process as soon as there's that second repeat violation.
And then that's, that's it? It's considered a chronic nuisance?
That's correct.
Commissioner Harney?
Sure. So at the last meeting, I raised an issue. It's not an issue that will keep me from voting for this tonight because it's a change to an existing ordinance. But it's an issue that our attorney has studied, Ms. Ryan, Ms. Pamela Ryan, and it's an issue that I think commands our attention. So there are a bunch of cities, lots of cities across the United States have ordinances that are similar to ours in chronic nuisance, and several of them have been sued. The ACLU has been a party to some of these lawsuits, and it basically goes like this. When you, when you basically come up with a list of offenses, right, and you say, you know, these are nuisance things, right? And you say, if two or more of these things happen within a certain period of time, or three within another period of time happen, then we will have the ability to, you know, take some special action against you. If, in that list of things that you listed, you know, you're not differentiating victims of crimes from the perpetrators of the crimes, you create a situation that could potentially be very dangerous. And so, you know, there was a situation, for example, in Missouri, where a woman who was a victim of domestic violence, right, which is a crime, it occurs in a place, it could occur at a property. And basically, she was, you know, the victim of domestic violence. She called the police. The police came several times. After that, the city began their chronic nuisance process. They leaned on the landlord, said, we're going to remove your CO if you don't fix this situation. Obviously, that encouraged the landlord to evict the woman, who's simply trying to call the police. So the next time the gentleman comes to abuse the woman, she doesn't call the police, right? So that's an issue that violated, you know, many of her rights. And they sued and won. And the cities, in three cases, in their Markham versus Surprise, the City of Surprise in Arizona, Briggs versus Borough of Norristown, Watson versus Maplewood, these cities paid six figures in settlements to, you know, and these settlements are public. You can, you know, you can read them. So, A, to protect ourselves, I think that when we, you know, in the future, in the very near future, we need to look at this and distinguish between victims of crime and perpetrators of crime. I recognize, and I trust, you know, PBSO, you know, you guys are not going to stupidly enforce this, but the ordinance itself does not instruct PBSO to differentiate between victims and perpetrators, and that's something that it absolutely should do, because our ordinance, as Ms. Ryan said, is like, they're ordinances, and they have exposure, therefore we have exposure. So I'm wondering, you know, she sent an email to us asking what we thought about going forward with that in the future. I'm wondering what my colleagues think about that.
Madam Mayor, if I can, and Commissioner Harney's right, and the cases he spoke of are problematic. We do have, in the current ordinance, a provision that says it's not a chronic nuisance activity if, say, the person who does it on the property is the victim of the crime and called for service. So the way this works in reality is PBSO would develop for a property, a list of calls for service that they have received. That list includes what the alleged offenses would be. And we go through that list to find the qualifying offenses. The one property that we've used this ordinance on previously, we went through, it was a retail establishment, and we went through that, and for the instances where they were called, where the retail establishment was the victim of the crime, so like shoplifting, we struck through those, because we don't want to hold our property owners responsible when they call for service because they're a victim of a crime. So I think to Commissioner Harney's comments, what we'll look at doing in the future, and what some cities have done in these similar ordinance, is they make it clear that domestic violence will never be a qualifying offense under this ordinance, and have a similar provision, you know, not allowing us to go after if someone is truly a victim of the crime at the property and they've called for service.
I have a, yes, sorry. I have another, I guess, question, and this wasn't covered in the three private, you know, previous cases, but we have Good Samaritan laws, right? The laws exist to encourage folks to call the police when someone is overdosing, right? So let's say you got two people, they're renting an apartment, and overdoses have occurred in the apartment previously. PBSO, Palm Beach Fire Rescue, has been called to the apartment. Let's say it's a lot, and we begin to move on the landlord with chronic nuisance, right? You potentially have the same situation where the landlord could encourage, right, the, you know, the residents, hey, if I get another call for service, you know, I'm kicking you guys out of here the next time there's an overdose, rather than the Good Samaritan law working. The Good Samaritan law doesn't work because it's blunted by, you know, the way that our ordinance is enforced, and someone dies, rather than, you know, has the police call. And I'm wondering, you know, do we have any exposure there?
Madam Mayor, I think it's an excellent point to bring up. I think, again, with these types of properties that we'd work in conjunction with PBSO on, we're not going to be looking at, you've had two calls for overdoses. It's going to be a laundry list, and we're going to make sure that we're not on thin ice in that type of situation, or a domestic violence situation. And typically, what we've seen with these types of cases is, we have a laundry list to work with. But you bring up an excellent point, that we do really need to look at the calls for service and make sure we've got plenty there that are clearly, you know, not domestic violence, not an overdose, but a real chronic nuisance that's costing PBSO a lot more time than it should be.
And just one last request. I trust the folks who are here today. You know, we write ordinances, you know, we're writing ordinances with other folks in mind, right? And I just, I just want to make sure that there's some sort of instruction in the ordinance that we're going to give some sort of consideration to issues like that when we enforce, you know, chronic nuisance abatement.
Absolutely. And we can talk internally about perhaps a policy that we enact internally that goes along with this, so that we have some clear parameters on what we bring forward and don't.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, per temp.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, you used the term "second repeat offense" several times. Does that mean on the third occurrence, or is it the second occurrence?
I'm sorry. On the current ordinance, it says there are two or more repeat violations on the property. So the second repeat violation, we could utilize for purposes of this ordinance. More than likely, it'll probably be more.
So it's two strikes?
Correct.
It's not one plus two repeat? It's one plus a repeat?
It's two or more repeats. So they would have to repeat the same ordinance.
Repeat, repeat.
Repeat, repeat. So...
So they have, so they have to have two separate code violations repeated?
The original and then the repeat.
Okay. Let me back up, so maybe I'm not understanding the question.
Who's on first?
Right, exactly. So for, for code compliance, if you violate, let's keep it simple.
Grass.
Grass. You violate grass, the magistrate says you violated the grass ordinance. Under code compliance, if you violate the grass ordinance again within five years, it's a repeat violation. If you violate it again within five years, it's your second repeat violation.
So that'll be the third time?
Correct.
Okay.
So there would be a total of three violations on the same ordinance.
So what's the need for the second repeat?
So the decision was to bring it forward on the second repeat. Now, we could bring it forward on the first repeat, but then you're going to have a lot of people who have had just two violations, who now have to go under this other process, which is within, of course, the council's discretion, if that's what you want the ordinance to say. But I think they were looking at a little bit of a higher standard before we kick off this process for code compliance.
Well, here's something I'd like to throw out there. First of all, Florida 162 allows for double the penalty, the fine for a repeat offense. Okay, so that's one thing. I hope that's being done consistently. Okay. Well, I'm not going to joust with you on this one. I'm a little bit, okay. The other thing, and Commissioner Omari, Harney, I thank you for your comments, but you know what? It begs the question. You talk about, and I'm all for the victims getting the pass, so to speak, for lack of a better way, that incident not being credited towards a nuisance abatement situation. But you know, and I think, Madam Mayor, you mentioned it earlier, the dumpster violations and the dump furniture, you know, what's to preclude a property owner from saying, you know what? It's not my garbage. Somebody just dumped there. They're the victim.
What offense?
I mean, this is a slippery slope. So what are we doing here? I mean, does that make sense to my colleagues here? I mean, I could just call up, if I got an apartment building, say, hey, I didn't put that out there. Somebody dumped it there. And I think that where I'm going with this is that, in that particular situation, I'm not talking about domestic violence, but in a situation like that, is that going to stand in our eyes, as far as not, you know, bringing them forward all under chronic nuisance? That's my question.
Madam Mayor, if I may. So what I would say is that the exemption for a victim of a crime who called for service would not apply to a code violation, because code violations are for a code violation and not a crime. And usually, that property owner is not the one who calls for service because someone allegedly...
They will now.
Right. And they may call now. Now, under the code compliance side of things, it doesn't matter who illegally dumped on your property, you're the property owner, and you have to, under our code, clean it up, or we can take you under code compliance. Then you'll have the repeat violation if you can, if you don't clean up your property.
So it's kind of, for lack of a better expression, it's kind of a double whammy if you're a victim. You aren't, it's not credited against the property because you were a victim. However, the fact remains, it's still a code violation, so you're going to get a ding. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, for if it's dealing with a code violation, dealing with illegal dumping on your property, or you claim you're the victim of the code violation.
I happen to know someone, I've gotten reports of a property that has, one of its meters, its housing meters is beyond its fence line, the way the fence was put up years ago before they owned the house. And one of the, one of these alleged problem properties on South Federal, which has had numerous issues before, you know, with dumping and whatnot, they've been dumping on this person's property, but their meter is there, so therefore, they are, they called and they are then responsible for going back into the alleyway to clean this when it's a continuous thing. It's like, what are you supposed, what are you supposed to do? Do I have to get, catch them in the act? Do I have, I mean, it's a sticky weight.
I'm looking, you know, my comments are really geared towards some of the things that we see on a regular, daily basis across the city. The dumping of trash is one.
Furniture.
Shopping carts.
Furniture.
Would it be number two?
I can't look at you very clear.
What?
I just can't.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear on how we're going to do this. I just don't want, want folks to start claiming as a defense that they were victimized.
Yeah.
And, you know, per Commissioner Harney's, you know, very reasonable exceptions.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what, I would make sure that we want to do that. And I thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to comment on the chronic nuisance. I've sat a few times with the Sheriff's Department on their Chronic Nuisance Board, and I can assure you, our attorneys, the professional police officers that sit on that board are very knowledgeable about the players and exactly what's going on. And at no time was it, you know, domestic violence issues or anything. Not to say that it couldn't be, but they're professionals in the field that they work in. They know exactly what chronic looks like. They're out there working at day, day and night. And, you know, I've seen quite a few chronic nuisance come before Christie's department, and, you know, they're very professional in what they do. Comment on the illegal dumping. I, for years, have had calls on people with properties, and, you know, I've informed them that it's your property, you're responsible for your property. I have, and with the city's help, we have helped them out on occasion the first couple of times, but we did go back and inform them that it's their property, they're responsible for their property, whether it's fencing, whether it's, most of the properties have signage, and it's illegal dumping, you know, it's construction workers that just, you know, see an empty field and dump it. Or in our garbage cans, quite often downtown, we have them just back up the truck and fill the whole dumpster with, you know, construction debris. And you really, you have to catch them, you know. And I'm hoping with all the cameras that we have over the city now, that, you know, we are able to catch some of them. But it's, it's one of those gray areas that, you know, there's only so much you can do about.
Commissioner Harney?
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Maxwell for making it clear that we're going to have to be really careful when, when drawing, you know, whatever line that we end up drawing, with direct resources and law enforcement attention, and, you know, the attention of our, our code compliance department towards people who are doing things that they're responsible for, that they should be responsible for, and while also protecting folks that are not responsible for the things...
while also protecting folks that are not responsible for the things that are happening at their, at their property. It's going to be, have to, this is certainly something that we're going to have to be careful about. But, yeah, so.
It's always hard writing one law that pertains to every situation created by mankind. Not protect everybody. We have to try to do the best we can and use our discretion. And I've seen, I've seen how our staff and everyone handles it. We're not looking to hurt anybody, we're looking to protect everybody humble on all sides of this. Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Robinson.
To bring this to an end, what are we going to do with the second dumping the next day? That the dumpster is dumped, and there's another mattress two days later? Is there fines? There is fines.
Mark Stivers with Community Sustainability. We do have fines. The Solid Waste Team, we actually met with them today. And we're taking several of the staff members, taking them through the face training, so that they can issue citations and fines directly, rather than calling out the code enforcement office. So, the idea behind this, and Felipe, Felipe, sorry, and Jamie and I have been working on this for a while now, is to really expand our reach to ensure that when these guys are out there, and they're out there on a daily basis and driving around the city, we don't have to stop, call code, have them come out. But these guys can then react as well to some of these other trash issues. So, I think by expanding this out, we're going to be able to serve the city better.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen. I appreciate it. We've got a motion on the table in a second.
I think you have to take public comment.
Oh, I did, I did.
Did you ask?
At the beginning, there were none. Yeah.
It's in my notes. Sorry about that.
Fully noted. Thank you. Motion on the floor in a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to new business. Thank you. Resolution number 03-2020, adopting Lake Worth Beach Opportunity Zone Master Plan. Second?
Second.
Any public comment cards? Okay. Mr. Waters?
Well, good evening. William Waters, Community Sustainability Director. First to correct the record. Tonight was the first that I've heard that I'm involved in a hotel at the beach. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Anyway, so.
Would you please, pardon me.
Go ahead.
Would you be more specific, please, for the record?
I'm not involved at all with doing any kind of hotel work at the beach.
There's no discussion in your department about a hotel on the beach?
No.
In any department that you've heard of?
Well, there was just the presentation that CPZ did, as one of their alternatives had a hotel in it.
Right.
But that's, that's a year and a half ago, as far as I know.
Thank you.
Very clear for the record. It's a very sensitive issue for all of us, I think. These rumors get started, and, you know, they get bigger and bigger.
I know. Thank you. Appreciate that. Back to the matter.
So, as you all may remember, we initiated WGI to undertake a master plan study of our Opportunity Zone area. They were initiated back in last spring. And over the summer of last year, we did a couple of meetings with the neighborhoods involved to understand what an opportunity zone is, how does it work, where will it be happening, and how they are chosen. We went through this as well with you all. About a year ago, I guess, we explained what the Opportunity Zone program was, how it was initiated by the federal government. There was a selection process. And we had one of our areas census tracts in the city, which is bordered by the FEC railroad track, Sixth Avenue South, 95, and the municipal southern boundary as our Opportunity Zone area. There are a couple of enumerated potential benefits of participating in opportunity zones. They range from encouraging economic development and job creation to workforce and affordable housing, infrastructure improvements, roadways. And then that can lead to improvement in schools and other options for the community at large. There were two public meetings. One was, the first one was June 27th. We held that at the Osborne Center and discussed with the residents that came, what is the opportunity zone, how it might benefit you, how it might encourage new development or redevelopment in that area, and what priority issues they might have to improve their quality of life. There were results based on very, a number of things. What was surprising, they were on the upper right. They were most in favor of having a laundromat, healthcare facilities, a neighborhood grocery store, and most against gas stations, car lot repair, and light industrial. Fortunately, the zoning that's in place there in future land use encourages those things that were in favor, and is not very encouraging of those things that they are against. Some other priority areas, and Commissioner Robinson did, was at one of the meetings. And I believe Commissioner Maxwell, we followed up with him as well on it. And many of their concerns that were raised were not germane to the opportunity zone itself, but the overall climate in the area, concerns about crime, safety, interaction with Palm Beach Sheriff's Office, and things that were happening in Atlanta versus what were happening in Lake Worth Beach. So, here's a map of what we've produced with WGI. There are five nodes. Up at Sixth Avenue South, there's a mixed-use residential node. And this follows the dictates and requirements of our current zoning districts that are in place in this area, as well as our future land use plan. The medium orange is our transit-oriented development. That will be our third tier station, if we're ever, ever able to get the East Coast link underway. We hope that will be within the next 20-year window. There's a neighborhood core identified as the main gateway into the opportunity zone. What you'll notice, too, is the whole area that is now zoned, single-family residential, is not in the study. The economic opportunities under an opportunity zone don't really necessarily benefit single-family residential. And we did not want to change that flavor of the neighborhood. So, that was left out of the study, because that was essentially going to stay the way it is. The gray is an artisanal makers district, very similar to what you would see in Wynwood in Miami, but more from an artisanal, industrial, craftmaker-type aspect. There's a mixed-use district of multifamily to the south. And then we also included in the area, a portion of the old dump site as possibly a health and technology incubator to create job skills and research and development in those two areas that are also under the industry clusters of the Business Development Board. We looked at the types of housing that would be appropriate in those areas. And of course, we are working diligently on the missing middle, which is housing that is affordable and available to the workforce community, which would be townhomes, apartments, or condominiums. There's also a lack of neighborhood retail, which we identified as being appropriate for the neighborhood core. It could also happen a little bit on Sixth Avenue South, in the lower area of artisanal industrial along the railroad track. Some examples of what these types of housing would look like. It's medium-density residential. The transit-oriented development is the most intensive area, and does allow, at the base, 50 units an acre, and also a mixture of uses, commercial office and residential. So, we looked at some examples of how that looks in other communities. The neighborhood core is serving as a gateway and a pedestrian access point into the single-family area, as well as to the southern and northern portions of the district, which are definitely separated by 12th Avenue South. And how a neighborhood core could look with an identifiable public space. Artisanal makers district, and what types of buildings might be appropriate for that. And then the healthcare tech incubator, and what it might look like. We did include a possibility of a live-work tech incubator idea that came to us from an entity that was looking at something similar to what a distribution center would be for Amazon. And they gave us the idea that likely this area could serve as housing, as well as health and technology incubator. I don't have the actual plan overall itself, because we've not, because of our ADA compliance issues and some others, we have not created the whole document. But it goes into the details of these items on the opportunity zone. It gives scenarios of how those various nodes would look. I can pull up a little bit of the 3D renderings, if you want to look at those. But the final document, we're going to send, if you are approving it, to have it remediated, so we can place it on the web. Also, the Business Development Board and the county have asked us to provide links to this plan when it's finished. In talking to Crabtree, who's going to help me do this, as well as some work from WGI, because our contract is not totally completed. We hope to have this all finished in a couple of months. It does take a little bit of time. This document will also be set up as a pamphlet brochure that can be distributed and given to developers and people who are interested. Also, one caveat to the opportunity zone. Legislation is still pending to extend the benefit window, because the benefit window initially ended December of 2019. So, it's a stay tuned. There have been, there are still benefits allowed, but the full benefit that was allowed or appropriated under the legislation did end. You had to have the projects vested and in place or started by the end of last year. So, obviously, I think there was only one project that met that deadline in Palm Beach County. And so, they are looking at how to extend that, because the window was very, very short. So, answering any questions if you have them.
When will we know when it's going to be extended?
I will let you know as soon as I know. We get a little primer from the Business Development Board. Sherry Howard at the County Office of Economic Opportunity. Sustainability is also, we're in contact, so we're communicating among each other. And then WGI is also involved in a couple of other opportunity zones. We also plan to present this as a case study at the National Florida American Society of Landscape Architects in Miami later this year, because there was an interest in it.
In this Lake Worth area?
There's, you would be surprised at how many design professional entities want to hear about Lake Worth Beach. We've presented at the Florida American Planning Association Conference, I think, five times since I've been here.
Don't say it like that, man.
Well, we're a community that has somehow managed to keep our unique charm, and we want to perpetuate that. And people are interested in what we're doing. We have a lot of progressive things in our land development code, as well as other codes. And so, and then the entitlement arena, such as WGI, have fun working here, and they like promoting what they do. And it just so happens, they do a lot of work in Lake Worth Beach. So, by consequence, we get a lot of free publicity.
So, if it's extended, WGI will get.
WGI's window of time with us will be finished once this plan is done. Now, whether they will work with a developer or someone to take advantage of the opportunity zone is yet to be known. But I'm sure that they will do their best. And we have several other entitlement entities working with developers to try to encourage them to invest. One challenge in this opportunity zone, there's not a lot of large assembled parcels. And so, we are reaching out to a couple of property owners who own a lot of property, who happen to be collaborating with Mark on the co-compliance side, to hopefully encourage them to do some investment to improve their property.
So, WGI won't be, if and when it's extended, the WGI won't be coming back to extend their contract, or?
No. This is a one-time thing. They're creating our promotional information and our plan. The caveats of when it will sunset, we can do that edit very easily in the document. If there's a different date, I can do that.
With no numbers?
Like the date, time?
No money increase?
To whom?
Do you expect to have more consultant work?
I do not anticipate any more consultant work on the opportunity zone at this time, unless it's paid for by a private entity.
Mr. Hardy?
I love your use of the word collaborate, regards, Mark. You said something. You were talking about folks collaborating to work on the code enforcement process. You said something that caught my attention. You said, "Much of what people said that they want our future land use plan doesn't encourage, and much of what our future land use plan encourages the community has said that they do not want."
No, I said, "They do like it."
Okay. I heard that the opposite way.
Everything that they mentioned does include it. It's, we didn't have to make any recommended changes to anything based on what they voiced to us that they liked.
So, like the stuff about the industrial stuff in the neighborhood?
We've, our zoning doesn't allow that to get any worse than it already is. We're trying to get it, make it look better.
Okay. All right. Cool. Miss heard it. All right.
Got a motion on the floor and a second? Any public comment cards? Seeing there are none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And once we get it finished, I'll make sure that you just get a copy of it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. City Attorney, do you have an update?
Madam Mayor, thank you. The one thing I just want to update was, we were going to hear tonight a potential amendment to the Economic Development Incentive Agreement with the MID. I am working with their attorney on an amendment, which will probably be brought back either Monday night or Tuesday night of next week as a sort of special meeting agenda item. We're addressing some issues that have arisen with the bond that they need to get in order to do infrastructure work for the city. So, we're working with them on that, and hopefully, we'll have that resolved into you next Monday or Tuesday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Press releases have gone out on these two items. And hopefully, I wasn't out of the room, and somebody didn't announce this. But the pier is closed, and will be closed through Friday. Because of the inclement weather and the ocean swells, we have a fear of it damaging the pier, so we have to take the sections out. So, it'll be closed until Friday. And I also want to announce that the Wedding Wire Couples Choice Award for the casino ballroom is a wedding venue. Fourth consecutive year, staff has been able to run a tremendous facility and win this award for the fourth consecutive year. And I think that speaks volumes to what a tremendous facility we have and how it's run right now.
And the employees?
Thank you.
Can I ask for an update on the timeline of the L&amp;M legal process? Well, there's a window of opportunity for litigation. Is, can you inform us as to the steps, the timeline, the process of possible litigation for the L&amp;M development?
Madam Mayor, if I may, I think, let me have, I need to have Kamala Ryan contact you directly on that issue, because she's been working specifically on that issue. And I don't actually know what the status is right now. So, I will have her call you directly.
The general status is that the result letter of your decision has been provided to the applicants and the affected parties.
Okay. Thank you very much.